So he should be back. Probably we have to wait.
Mayor Corbett.
Mayor.
We're ready.
Ready?
Okay. Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Corbett.
Here.
Arnold Matthews.
Here.
Arnold Silver.
Here.
Arnold Spicer.
Here.
Okay, you to adopt the agenda. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. New business, interview of applicants for Ward 4. Starting with Jessica Bowman.
I'm Amanda Bruton, the Human Resources Director for the City of White House, and I'll be asking the questions tonight for the Ward 4 vacancy for Board of Mayor and Aldermen. We expect the audience to give each speaker an opportunity to be heard. In deference to our limited time, please hold your applause until each candidate's interview has ended. We'll begin with you, Ms. Bowman. You will be given two minutes to respond to each question. Our timekeeper, Derek Watson, our Administrative Services Director, who is seated to the far left here, will raise a 30-second card to warn you when the 30 seconds remain and a stop card when time is up. You must immediately conclude your remarks at this time. Time limits are closely followed to ensure fairness to all candidates. If you would like for me to repeat a question, please just ask. Also, do not feel that you have to use up the entire two minutes for a response. We'll begin with question one. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brother-in-laws, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
No.
Okay. Excuse me. What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
I'm not super familiar with the way that the City of White House works in a lot of ways, is what I've learned recently. My understanding is they're representative for our community and for each ward, obviously. We are to listen to what the public wants and bring it back to the city and hopefully represent them in an appropriate way.
What preparations have you made or background do you have that make you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
I think as of recently, I've lived here since 2017, and more time that goes by, I'm able to get involved more with the city in different ways. Opening a business has really opened my eyes to the way things, the way you can be involved, basically. It's not you have to have a political background to be able to be involved in your city. I'm a mom and now a business owner, and we're really involved in a lot of different things, but I think that, you know, having an outgoing personality, being able to interact with the public, understand what it's like to live here and want the best for our community, really gives me an insight of things that can be done, changed, done better, and just have maybe a different opinion and add something different to the mix based on different personality types and backgrounds and things like that. My background is really a lot of customer service, being family-oriented and things like that, so I think that kind of represents White House in a lot of ways because, in my mind, it's still a small town that is all about family, and so I think I could bring that aspect of it to keep that in the forefront so that we stay small-town, but we're able to grow at the same time, if that makes sense.
When it comes to the city budget, will you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I would say probably somewhere in the middle. I mean, I can understand that, you know, you have to quote-unquote "spend money to make money" or "spend money to improve things, but I think it's also important to be conservative and look and see where maybe things can be bid by different people and, you know, see who can offer quality but also save the city money.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of, either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
So in the City of White House, I haven't been a member of any. Again, I kind of just assumed that you had to have a background in politics to really be involved or work for the city. When I lived previously in Louisville, Kentucky, I helped a lot with our community center there, and we had a nature center that I was heavily involved in. I'm very heavily involved in our church, which is in Hendersonville, so I'm, you know, on like our VBS committee and things like that. I lead, I'm a coordinator for first grade there. I teach Sunday School, you know, we've led other types of groups and things like that. Any sports that my kids have played, whether they be in White House or somewhere else, I've been team mom or, you know, those types of things, just because I like to be involved and really help out where maybe other parents don't like to do that kind of stuff. I would say that volunteering is like one of my biggest favorite things to do, which just kind of sounds silly, but I just like to, you know, be involved and help maybe where it doesn't pay, but it pays in other ways, if that makes sense.
The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on at least on one of these boards or commissions?
Yes. Being self-employed and a business owner, I'm able to prioritize things. Even just this week, you know, we were able to close our business because we have VBS and it's day and night. I'm supposed to be there right now, but they understand that this is important and I needed to be here, so I did look at my schedule beforehand to make sure that is a commitment that I could accept and I would be able to do that.
There is unprecedented, let me try that again, there is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about the growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow, and what would you do differently?
That's hard and probably very touchy. To me, it looks like just right. I actually used to Uber during COVID, and so I met a lot of people that were moving here from all over the country, some out of the country, and I was shocked at how many people are actually moving to Middle Tennessee and not specifically Nashville, but the outlined areas. So realistically, we have to have housing for people. I mean, if we don't have it, you know, it's going to be a problem. So I think it's at a good pace. I love country. Of course, it's sad to see great fields go and, you know, where your deer and things like that live, but it's necessary for the growth, so I think right now it seems to be okay. But I would like to know more about what's being built and, you know, what's projected and things like that to make sure that it doesn't progress too quickly or too fast and the infrastructure can withhold everything.
On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House? What recommendations do you have to make it better?
I want to say a 10. I mean, I love living here. My husband grew up here. I did not. We lived in Greenbrier when we met and got married and quickly moved here because we wanted to raise our kids here. I really, really, really love it, so I would say a 10. Improvements, I mean, I think improvements are being made, honestly, like, I know you can't please everybody, but the things that we do have, this building alone, you know, I'm so impressed with the stuff that's being done. The farmer's market is huge to us. The splash pad, even though it's not open right now, I know it will be. The playgrounds and everything, I mean, because we're so family-oriented, I think that as long as we keep those things and continue to listen to what the public wants and we can do it within reason, I think that'll really help bring people here and want them to stay here, and the schools are great as well.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the Medical Center to US 31W, which would you choose?
Is the Medical Center crossroads?
Yes.
Wow. Well, I would like to know more about those three. I guess I would say maybe fire. I'm not, I don't know the need for that because I don't live over there, but that does seem important, and now that I think about it, both of them being over here, you know, if I lived over there, it would probably be really important to me. I honestly didn't know that the widening of the road on Sage was maybe an issue or something they want to do. The soccer complex, I will say I've been there and I've taken my business there and it seems to be fine, but I guess a parking lot might be nice, you know, eventually. So probably with the information that I do have based off those three things, the fire, the fire hall on the other side.
Would you like to provide a closing statement to the board?
Should have thought that one through, sure. So I think growing up here can mean a lot. You know, there's roads named after people, there's generations of people who've been here for a really long time, but I think it's also important to remember that as we grow, it's good to bring in new people, too, and that's kind of my stance. Like, I would love to be where I grew up and, you know, people know me there and might back me on certain things, but I don't want to feel like an insider or an outsider coming in because I do feel like I live here and I belong here, so it's important to me to feel like a White House resident and be able to represent that appropriately. I don't feel like I'm going to move or go anywhere anytime soon, so I do feel like I'm a good candidate, but I really, really just want to learn about the city and, you know, be a good asset to the community.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, are you here? If you could please step up to the podium.
Thank you. As stated before, you will have two minutes to answer each question.
Do you have any questions regarding that?
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and get started with question one, then. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
No.
What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
People. Our city is made up of people. Y'all have done good work representing people, being a go-between between the city government and the people, just being able to make relationships, build relationships with people in the ward to be able to take their concerns back. Most of us feel like government is so big we can't get involved. You even alluded to it, you know, and I have to be a politician to want to get in government, and I think y'all have done a great job. I know many of you personally, so you've done a great job of getting to the people and being there for the people. You're accessible, and I think that's the number-one responsibility of here is we're a small community, we're a small town, is staying accessible to the people.
What preparations have you made or background do you have that make you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
I'm a people person and have been since I was tiny. I enjoy people, and I guess preparations would be learning people and learning how to communicate with people. It's been, I'm a pastor and pastor of church now, part-time, and that has helped me tremendously of learning people, and it's been a very valuable tool to be involved and to just learn how people do, and that's hard, especially today, and people don't want to let their guard down and be who they really are, and I think that's a huge key of being able to just understand how we all work.
When it comes to the city budget, will you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I'm going to fall in the middle. I work full-time for Sunbelt, which is a multi-billion-dollar company, and I'm in management, so learning that you have to spend money in order to be able to do what you need to do in the city's budget that I have been familiar with has, you know, rising and rising and rising, so there's got to be balance between the two. There's got to be give-and-take between the two, but the people of White House expect, like y'all said, nice parks and roads widening and all the fun stuff that most city residents expect, so I think it's got to be somewhere in the middle of a conservative, you've only got this much coming in and this is what you need to do, but you have to spend the money in order to take care of the people.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of, either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
City of White House, I served on the Chamber Board for three years and thoroughly enjoyed that. I've been involved, I'm 23-years sober, recovered alcoholic, I've been involved in recovery programs in the city, out of the city, in the Sumter County Jail, so that's been the majority of the volunteer work and, of course, serving in our church and different opportunities I've had in White House. The Chamber Board for three years was an incredible experience. That's what got my feet wet for this, and it's a lot of small civic organizations at different times and just being involved in the community and what the community is doing.
The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one of these boards or commissions?
Yes.
There is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow, and what would you do differently?
I think, opinion-wise, I would put it, I don't think we've grown too fast. The growth is coming. We saw it go south, and it's gone as far south as it can go and still be commuting into Nashville, so it had to go somewhere. We all knew the community, I mean, I grew up in Bethlehem out '76 at Bethlehem Church and grew up there from the time I was five until I moved off at 20, and this community hasn't changed a great deal. It has grown in the last few years, but it's still the same small hometown community that it's always been. Yes, it takes me longer to get from my house on Portland Road to tractor supply than it ever has, but I mean, it's part of growth. Ms. Evelyn Boyle, I had a conversation with her before she passed, and I think about Ms. Evelyn and the growth that she saw and the excitement she had for what was going on in the City of White House. I think it's, growth is good, but I think it needs to be measured growth and growth that you feel like you've got your hands around and feel like you've got a plan of where it's going, and I feel like our city does. It may not look like it to some of us on the ground at different times and trying to figure out where all those cars out of those houses or apartments are going to go and how it's going to work, but I think the growth has been very well-planned and very well put together. I think that answers that.
On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House? What recommendations do you have to make it better?
I'd rate it a 10. That's why my wife and I moved here six years ago into the city from outside of the city limits, and we did that for a reason, and that's because the quality of life in the city is what we consider to be good. And things to make it better, I think concentrating on schools and roads and infrastructure, on what is currently on the books and what is future growth, I think is always good to be able to have that plan of where things are at.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the Medical Center to US 31W, which would you choose?
I would choose the fire station because that's my background of just for safety, just for knowing that part of the country and what's there. They're all three going to be things that I'm sure are either already looked at or already planning to happen. My delivery trucks that deliver equipment up here have a hard time on Sage Road, no matter when they come and what happens, but, I mean, they're all three of equal importance in some way or another, but I think the safety of the people and the community has got to be a top priority and has always been for White House. It's always had impeccable police department and fire department, so I think it, I would, knowing my background, go with the fire department.
Would you like to provide a closing statement to the board?
Yeah, I mean, I know most of you or contact with most of you at some point. I'm not a politician, I'm a people person, and I'm a person of faith, and I can't figure out the motivation other than people. I don't think I'm going to have a career in politics at 56, and that's how things are going to change, but I'm doing this as just a way to be able to be involved with people and be involved in our community. I was heavily in the recovery side of it in and around White House for so many years, but then when I left Temple and went to another church, I'm no longer doing that, so I'm looking for opportunities to be able to serve my community, and this one just didn't seem to ever go away. It went away and came back, and that was back again, and so I'm anxious. I think I would be a good fit. I think I would be a good representative of our ward and the people in that ward. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Castiglione, is she here? I'm hoping I did not butcher your last name.
It was pretty close.
Okay.
How are you this evening?
I'm doing wonderful. I'm Amanda Bruton, Human Resources Director, obviously handling the interviews. To go over a couple of things, you will be given two minutes to respond to each question. Our timekeeper, Derek Watson, Administrative Services Director, who is seated to the far left, here will raise a 30-second card to warn you when you have 30 seconds remain and a stop card when your time is up. You must immediately conclude your remarks at this time. Time limits are closely followed to ensure fairness to all candidates. If you would like me to repeat the question, please just ask. Also, do not feel that you have to use up the entire two minutes for a response. So we'll get started with question one. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
I do not.
What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
Well, I spent some time before I applied for this job. I think it was out about a week and a half, and I really took some time to think about it, and to answer your question, I think that it's not as easy as it appears to people. I think that there, you have to have a great balance between what's best for the city and what's best for the representatives, the people that you're representing and work for for this. You need to be able to bridge the gap between government and the residents, be open to new ideas, be able to represent the people that you're representing to the government, to the meetings, voice their opinions, always have their voice in the back of your head when you're making decisions, because in taking this role, even though I'm a resident, I'm not going to be making decisions for myself, I'm going to be making decisions for the people that I'm representing, and I'm taking everybody's ideas seriously and respecting everybody that I serve.
What preparations have you made or background do you have that make you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
Well, education-wise, I have a master's degree in security administration, bachelor's degree in psychology, sociology, and political science. I also have been a teacher and have worked as a teacher at Springfield High School for the last two years, and also my past also is law enforcement. I was the dean and I've been a community outreach volunteer, so those are the things that I have done to prepare myself for this position.
When it comes to the city budget, will you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I know that the way that you're presenting the question, you're asking me this or that, but I have to kind of, I'm not in the middle. It could fall either way. I'm very data-driven, I'm need-driven, I am, what is the urgency of something being done and what the facts are of not doing something, so I think that I could go both ways on that depending on what the outcome is and how it serves our residents.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of, either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
I have not had the opportunities, the first opportunity that I've presented, been presented to me, to represent White House. Prior to this, I was the Regional VP of American Society of Industrial Security, which is a worldwide organization. I've run multiple volunteer programs, including clothing drives, food drives, bear hug initiatives, which we collected bears from the police department to give to children in car accidents, domestic violence situations like that. Also have provided and set up tutoring assistance free of charge using both my students and myself to help people within the area. I've also been part of career guidance and focus groups in order to make things better.
The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one of these boards or commissions?
Absolutely.
There is unprecedented, I cannot say that word tonight, there is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about the growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow? What would you do differently?
That's a great question. I think that to say it's growing too fast is too harsh. I think that we're growing as the needs of our residents that are moving in. I think growth shows progress. I think it's going to develop more funds for the city so we can do more things for our residents. I feel like personally, living in Ward 4, honestly, I don't like to say anything negative because I've had such a great experience here and I love this city. When we moved here, we had several other cities that we went to. When we moved here, we had several other cities that we went to and my real estate agent, I was driving them crazy, going every place. And I was like, I kept going back to White House because it feels like home. And I think my situation is that I want to, with the growth, still let it feel like home to both myself and other residents. I don't want it to lose that charm. It's such a charming town. And as far as growth, it's gonna happen as needed. Infrastructure, I think, might be something to look at as far as roads and being stuck in traffic. That would be my only complaint to the increase is that I'm spending a lot of time in traffic.
On a scale of one to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House? What recommendations do you have to make it better?
Oh my gosh, I think the schools are great. And I'm split because I work for Robertson County Schools, so serving, you know, White House. And I have White House heritage students that had bused into my school for my classes. And also, my son goes to White House High School. So I've had the opportunity on both ends to see the education and the education here is phenomenal. And that's not only coming for me from being a previous dean. I think we're really preparing our kids for their future and for college. I think we're doing an excellent job. And I think that's what's actually drawing families here, is the great educational opportunities both within Robertson and Southern County. And as far as living here, I would not live anyplace else. I think it's fantastic.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the medical center to US 31W, which one would you choose?
I mean, I'm sorry, can I ask for an elaboration on the question as far as, are you asking what my personal thoughts would be or how I would make that decision?
Which, I guess, how you would make that decision?
I'm data-driven, okay? So I would go with need. Without having data in front of me and having a law enforcement background and public safety and always putting people's safety first, and with the growth that I've seen in White House, I would choose without looking at data, number one, get a fire department.
And would you like to provide a closing statement to the board?
Very brief. I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to vie for this position. I've been very excited about White House and it would be really thrilling for me, both as a teacher and as a resident, to have this position and be able to get out of the community and make a difference. So I appreciate your time so very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Colado is coming up.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Colado? If you could please step up to the podium. I'm Amanda Bruton, the Human Resources Director for the city, so I'll be handling the interviews tonight. A little bit of housekeeping before we get started. You'll be given two minutes to respond to each question. Our timekeeper Derek Watson, Administrative Services Director, who is seated to the far left, will raise a 30-second card to warn you when 30 seconds remain and a stop card when time is up. You must immediately conclude your remarks at this time. Time limits are closely followed to ensure fairness to all candidates. If you would like for me to repeat the question, please just ask. Also, do not feel that you have to use up the entire two minutes for a response. So we'll start with question one. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family member per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
No, ma'am.
What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
I think it starts with first listening and attention to what is the question, what are you being asked to do? What are you, what position are you filling at that time? I think the role changes. I think it's flexible to each individual, the citizen. And I think one day it may pertain to one set of needs and another day it could pertain to a different set of needs.
What preparations have you made or background do you have that makes you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
I started with my associates from Volunteer State Community College. And while I was there, predominantly the majority of my papers took interest on our infrastructure here and the growth that was taking place at the time. And after I graduated there, went on to Western Kentucky University and graduated with a bachelor's in criminology and a bachelor's in sociology. My concentration was in community and environmental development because I just took such an interest in the growth and expansion within communities and what that looks like for youth development and how some communities may leave that aspect out and how youths may be not necessarily thought of with growth and expansion with regard to community engagements and things of that nature. And so those were sort of the preparations that I've taken in the last several years. And I am now employed by Southern County Schools and hold several roles within.
When it comes to the city budget, will you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I think based on the issue at hand, that would be a flexible debate on whether it was a citizen need that came first or an infrastructure sort of need, you know? The topic of discussion before us, I think, would promote and respond.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
I haven't been a member of the board, but I helped the Planning Commission back in 2020. There were some different issues that I had lent some of my personal school related expertise to. And I worked with the Planning Commission at that time to lend my services. And since then, I've volunteered several times with the Library for Youth Services. My daughter is a member of one of their programs.
The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one of these boards or commissions? There is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow? What would you do differently?
I think the thing that I would have done differently is I would have paired the growth with the infrastructure growth. I think that we've sort of created a bit of a fishbowl for ourselves and it creates a bit of monopoly and gridlock at certain times. And it concerns me about, you know, if we ever had an actual emergency in the city that required some sort of evacuation plan, I don't feel that our infrastructure could really accommodate that. With the sort of concrete jungle we're creating, the natural runoff that we've seen that dissipates is increasingly less dissipating. We're gonna have an astronomical amount of flooding in some areas, which is alarming. Gridlock and traffic, drunk driving, things like that, I feel like we could have reduced if we had implemented some sort of additional transportation means for the city. And I think that with any natural growth process, that's something we really need to look at.
On a scale of one to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House and what recommendations do you have to make it better?
I'd say it's a nine. I think my thought is traffic. I really don't like our traffic. I think that we could get it to a 10 if we could really address the gridlock. And I think a lot of other citizens would feel the same way. There's heavy gridlock and a rush hour and it's frustrating, I know, for them to try to get home. Even a local hop that's less than five minutes has been extended by 10 or 15. And when you're trying to get home with your family, that matters.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the medical center to US 31W, which would you choose? If I need to repeat that, I will.
No, ma'am, you're fine. Widening Sage Road, I think, is a priority. I think for safety and for precautionary, you know, with our infrastructure, the way that we have it set up, if we do any more building the way that it's set up right now, there's not gonna be able to be put an ambulance through or an EMS vehicle of any kind should that need arise.
And would you like to provide a closing statement to the board?
I appreciate the time that you all have given me and I'd just like to say that I spent a lot of my time and thought in different ways that we could improve the city, different ways that life could be made a little less stressful for traffic and shopping and different stores that we don't have that would really help our community grow in a direction that would be productive for the city. And I'm raising my daughter here and we absolutely love it. And I've lived here since 2009, so I was here prior to the boom in growth. And I just really hope to help maintain the integrity of the city. And I'd just love to be a part of the development that we have happening and to help kind of guide in a direction that helps us still feel like White House.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's do, we're a little ahead of schedule, so.
Okay. How long would you like to take?
Curry's here. I said Curry is here, but you weren't, did it recess?
Let's, yeah, let's try to, because we're, he's scheduled for 7:20 and we're, let's take like a 10-minute.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, just do a motion.
Somebody make a motion.
Motion to adjourn for 10 minutes.
Right, second. All right, do we need a vote?
Just a voice out.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Would you like to take?
Yeah, let's, let's do, we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Okay. Who would you like to take?
Curry was a minute.
Curry's here. I said Curry is here, but he weren't there.
Let's, yeah, let's try to, because we're, he's scheduled for 7:20 and we're, let's take like a 10-minute.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, just do a motion.
Somebody make a motion.
Motion to adjourn for 10 minutes.
Right, say. All right, do we need a vote?
Just a voice out.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Corbett.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Silver.
Here.
Alderman Spicer.
Here.
Okay. Start back up with John Curry.
Good evening.
Good evening. Any questions about the time limits? I think we've been here.
No.
I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
No ma'am.
Okay. What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
Alderman is to represent the people of his district or actually the entire city, to work with the other aldermen, to set policy, to ask questions, to find answers, and try to do what's best for the community.
Okay. What preparations have you made or background do you have that make you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
I've been in retail management, hospitality, tourism management since I was 15 years old. I've lived many places, worn many hats. I'm relatable to all kinds of people, building relationships, making decisions, and I've practiced that all my life.
When it comes to the city budget, would you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I would tend to lean conservative most of the time, but you have to have all the information. You have to find a middle ground. I think things are all taken independently as they are and not lumped into a certain package of you're always going to be that way. You have to be flexible.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
Nothing here in White House, but 15 or so years ago, I sat on the City of Myrtle Beach Accommodation Tax Committee, City of Myrtle Beach Parking Program Committee, on the Board of Hospitality, Myrtle Beach Area Hospitality, was chairman of the Small Lodging Properties from Myrtle Beach Area Hospitality, sat on the Chamber Board for Legal and Legislative Matters, and also was on the special events promoting and coming to the Sun Fund Festival every year for about, from about 2000 to about 2008.
Okay. The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the 3rd Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one of these boards or commissions?
Yes ma'am, I'll make my own schedule.
Okay. There is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow? And what would you do differently?
I think it's growing at a pace just like it is everywhere else in the country. I think the main thing with growth is you have to have a balanced growth. It's like a wheel going down the road. If you don't have all the spokes the same way, it starts to wobble. And the same thing happens with communities when, when certain sectors get heavy or lighter or whatever. So I think you look at it and try to do a comprehensive look at it and keep everything in balance and move on down the road.
Okay. On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House and what recommendations do you have to make it better?
I'm going to say 9, only because I always believe there's room for improvement. But the quality of life in, in White House is, is one of the best. I've lived many places, east coast, west coast, all over. I chose five and a half years ago to live here. So I, I think that is very good.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the medical center to US 31W, which one would you choose?
I would choose the fire department. Anytime, anything public safety-wise to me comes first. It's much better to be proactive than reactive. Other things like road improvements and all that definitely are sometimes needed and, and are a pain or whatever, but they're an inconvenience and not a safety matter.
Okay. Would you like to provide a closing statement to the board?
Yes ma'am. I moved here five and a half years ago from Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. A lot of people say, well, why would you leave the beach? Well, it got overgrown. They kind of priced you out of paradise. But to come here, my sister and her husband moved here 30 years ago. Then my parents moved here 25 years ago after visiting my sister-in-law and thought it was a great place to live. They're both passed now, but they chose White House as a great place. I always visited year after year, thought it was a great place too. So when it was time for me to make a decision, I moved here to White House. I think, like I said, every community is going through these growth things and these problems. You just have to ask the questions, look for the answers, and work at it. It's going to be a constant thing. It's not, there's no cure. So I think I would like to be part of that just because I have some experience with what you're going to look at in the future that I've already dealt with in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Erper?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Burton, Human Resources Director, and I'll be facilitating the interview. You'll be given two minutes to respond to each question. Our timekeeper, Derek Watson, Administrative Services Director, who is seated to the far left, will raise a 30-seconds card to warn you when 30 seconds remain and a stop card when time is up. You must immediately conclude your remarks at this time. Time limits are closely followed to ensure fairness to all candidates. If you would like for me to repeat a question, please just ask. Also, do not feel that you have to use the entire two minutes for a response. So we're going to start with question one. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate, any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
Negative.
Okay. What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
I think it's to be a servant and represent the community. It's our job to take the information given to us and decide what's best for our community and as we balance the needs of growth, the needs of the community, the needs of our people and our residents, and to drive consensus and community agreement.
Okay. What preparations have you made or background do you have that make you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
I come from a business background. I've managed 200 people globally in an environment that represents a lot of engagement, a lot of collaboration, a lot of consensus driving. And I feel what's most important in any type of a public forum is to take the information given to you, drive awareness engagement from people so you can get the best information and make the decision that's going to benefit the most people. Want to apply that here to the city and understand what's going on, what we can do to drive change, and how we can help one another.
Okay. When it comes to the city budget, would you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I think a balanced approach is most important. What is, what you have to consider is the revenue that's coming in, what are you spending it on, what's the investments that you have to do? Management P and L at work, one of the things you have to do is capital investment. You have to look at all the different expenses that are coming at you and where are you going to spend the money most. So I think that's an important facet of how do you do it? You have to be flexible with what that budget is, what you have available, and what you need, what's the needs of the business community.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
I've volunteered in many different ways. So not only in employee resource groups as a mentor at work, but also in the community. I volunteered with the White House. I've done boosters. I've done coaching at the soccer field. I've been involved in many different ways at the schools for my students, for my children. And I look forward to kind of bringing that engagement, that participation in the community to this role.
The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the 3rd Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would, this would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one of these boards or commissions?
Yes.
There is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow? And what would you do differently?
It's been a wild ride in my experience here at White House. I feel the city has grown immensely, but there's immense demand for housing and for services here in the community. I feel looking forward, there needs to be a balanced approach as we think about all the homes that are coming in, all the new residents, all the services that are going to be acquired. So I feel it's been a good clip and you just have to be flexible to what needs to happen for the community moving forward.
On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House and what recommendations do you have to make it better?
I'm extremely happy with the community here, with the city and what we've been able to accomplish. I feel some of the improvements needed are going to be walking areas, sidewalks, streetlights. I'm seeing a ton of area, a ton of growth, and everything's going to be driven through traffic and cars. And how are we going to create a community that can actually engage with one another if there's no sidewalks, streets, roads, green spaces? So I feel like that's a huge priority for the city.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the medical center to US 31W, which would you choose?
You have to service the community first. Safety comes first. The fire department is going to be the most important thing that you need to do to ensure that the residents are safe. Clearly, traffic is going to be a huge issue here in the city with the amount of homes that are coming in. So that would be a second priority, but you have to go safety first.
Okay. Would you like to provide a closing statement to the board?
Yeah. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. I'm sure this gets a little bit repetitive, so I want to say thank you for your engagement. I represent the community in a ton of different ways. I've benefited a ton of ways here within the, within the community. And I think what's different for myself versus some of the other residents that I've seen is I don't have anything to benefit from this. I don't have any interests. I don't have any way to profit from this. I live in the city. I just want to step up and serve. And that's what I look to bring, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wall?
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you have any questions about the time limits or anything like that?
No.
Okay. I'm going to read the definition of immediate family per the City of White House's policy. An immediate family member includes spouse, children, parents, parents-in-law, children-in-law, brothers, sisters, brothers-in-law, and sisters-in-law. Do you have any immediate family member employed by the City of White House?
No ma'am.
What do you think are the roles and responsibilities of an alderman in our community?
Alderman is a representative of the city and its people. I feel that the alderman has a, is a, is a great purpose in taking care of the needs of the people of the city and listening to those needs and hopefully letting those needs be, be known to the, to the whole group and hopefully the, whatever, the best will come out of that.
What preparations have you made or background do you have that make you the best person to represent the 15,000 citizens of the City of White House?
Currently serve on three city boards, industrial development, construction appeals, and Board of zoning appeals. I have put myself in a position over the last nine years to develop relationships within the city with its, with its different departments and trying to find the, what the big picture is and where our city needs to go. the big picture is and where our city needs to go.
When it comes to the city budget, would you take a conservative approach to financing or do you lean towards progressive views in taking care of citizens' needs?
I'm more conservative. I'm never about putting the cart before the horse. You know, we've got to make sure that we have what we need going forward and making sure that the funds are there wherever we need them.
What civic organizations, boards, or commissions have you been a member of either in the City of White House or elsewhere?
Former member of Rotary Club, currently member of the Chamber. Of course, looks at I'm on three city boards now. I'm also involved with the White House football team. We're in their chain game for the last 12 years, so I've been involved in many aspects of the city.
The Board of Mayor and Aldermen meet in regular session on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Each board member also serves on a minimum of one other board or commission in the City of White House. This would require attendance at evening meetings. Would your schedule allow for you to serve on one of these boards or commissions?
Yes, ma'am.
There is unprecedented demand for residential housing in Middle Tennessee. How do you feel about the growth in our city? Has White House grown too fast, just right, or too slow? And what would you do differently?
I believe we've grown a little bit too fast. We've got issues with the interstate right now. Traffic's now a little heavier than it should be because of that. You know, here again, you've got to look at the big picture, and I believe that some of the past has not, that has not happened. You've got a big puzzle you've got to put together and make sure all the pieces are in the right places, and I feel that I can do a better job of that.
On a scale of one to 10, how would you rate the quality of life in White House and what recommendations do you have to make it better?
I'm going to say nine. Like General Forrest said, it's, it's, there's always a way, things can always be better. So, you know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what I could do at this point to make it better other than just pay attention to what's going on, listen to the citizens, and hopefully, you know, help them with their needs.
If you had to choose between funding building a 500-vehicle parking area at the soccer complex, purchasing property, and building a third fire station on the west side of the interstate, or widening Sage Road from the medical center to US 31W, which one would you choose?
Public safety, by far. So, you know, you've always got to make sure that you've got folks taken care of before you build the thing.
Would you like to provide a closing statement?
Yes, ma'am. I've lived here 27 years. I have put myself in a position the last nine years. Last seven, three years, but I've continued to come to meetings, put myself in a position to know what's going on, hopefully to prepare for this position at future times. So, in fact, in fact, I did not seem to disturb, but I'm, I'm here at work. I'm retired. I have plenty of time, and I've got all of the knowledge that's in my past that I've done in my process.